Okay, and we're going to be in the city council meeting for March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, to order. We'll all call when you're ready, okay?
Councilor Westover.
Here.
Councilor Millian.
Here.
Mayor Hills.
Here.
Councilor Schneider.
Rosen.
Councilor Crocker.
Here.
And Councilor Baker, who's for more absent today.
That's correct, there's huge absences. All right, please release these, please. No presentations tonight, so we'll move right on to public comments. And, does anybody want to comment, does anybody want to comment anything not on the agenda? Okay, great. If you want to move on to the consent agenda, and just have one set of minutes to approve. Anybody want to make any changes? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the consent.
So.
You have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, any more discussion? All's unfair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, pass this unanimously. Thank you. Next time I'm up to discussion to reestablish the Parks and Recreation Committee in chapter two point one three of the municipal code. It's an item up for discussion only, and making a change tonight, come back to approve an ordinance to, uh, set this in play. Comments by councilors? Anybody want to be recognized? Angie?
I do. Um, I had talked to a client who had, had spoken, she had told me about wanting to be on a commission or a committee, and she was outside of the city.
Yep.
Of Medford and was not allowed to be on, and so I was looking, doing some research. It looks like many cities do not allow that grants passed Medford-Central Point. Um, as I dug in, and I, and so I wondered about why and why not, um, and, and broke it down to maybe just as simple as someone deciding how somebody, somebody else's money is spent who doesn't have any skin in the game.
Yep.
Uh, kind of like if someone was from Oregon, or someone was from California and stating how Oregon taxpayer money should be spent, or, um, or resources be used, and so I wondered what everybody thought of that.
I think you might talk for a moment, but anybody else want to comment on it before I do?
Well, I think first of all, I'd like to, if I can impose upon our lawyer, to define the citizen of the, of the city. What are the parameters to be a citizen or not be a citizen of the city?
Be within, to be within the boundaries as a voting taxpayer, so if you're within the boundaries and you're voting on, uh, the, the, uh, district area or city area, then that would be, who would be considered within and outside boundaries. Does that make sense? I mean.
Yeah, it does, I just wanted to make sure that we had a common understanding of the definition.
Right.
If we did. Who is the keeper of the information to define the boundary?
Well, the county clerk has all that information as far as the election information is concerned.
Right.
And, and I would think, well, the city would have it, just by its organic creation.
Right.
And any kind of annexation that it has, but this, you know, I guess if you're looking for the official voting, uh, pool, then you'd go to the clerk's office and they would give you kind of the final definitive.
I think it's important to understand, because written into here is, like, the words of city versus non-city residents. In terms of, I believe you already said, the residents pay property tax and we take part of that money, people who are not residents do not pay property tax to us, or their money for property tax don't come to us. I think that's correct, right?
Yeah.
And the defining of that boundary is the same as the voting district?
It's not just taxpayers either, I mean, it's, it, they're, voters are voting who their representatives are, and there may be other things I'm not thinking of right at the moment, that, that residents would have a say over versus, and if, and to be on boards or not be on boards, I guess that would be another example. So, so yes, I mean, from a dollar and cents point, of course, those people who are within the city have, you know, a vested interest in who's on boards and stuff and what's being cited, but it's also, um, there's other decisions besides dollars and cents.
Yeah, I mean, I think if anybody living on property in Phoenix that pays taxes, it could be an apartment complex, you know, maybe you're not paying taxes directly, but you live in an apartment complex within the city.
No, not necessarily, because if you were, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Sure, no, go ahead.
But, uh, if you, you could own a business within the city and live, but you live outside the city, so, um, so to that end, you were, you would not be within the city limits.
But you're not living, it's not an apartment complex, is it?
No, it's not based on, uh, it would not be, what I was reading, would not be based on the fact of your property ownership, it would be based on your citizenship.
Right.
Yeah, but in a certain aspect, if you're renting from somebody, you give it to your landlord, he becomes, or he or she, he becomes a pass-through to the tax people because of the property tax being paid, so in a sense, somebody renting is also contributing to the tax base.
There are districts, uh, districts out there, um, in the, not, not necessarily in the city, but outside of the county area, uh, and throughout the state, in which property ownership is considered, uh, as part of the vote. That is, you have to have so many property owners that make a decision about whether they're pulled within a district, so, uh, they wouldn't necessarily have to live in that area, so like livestock districts are the ones I'm thinking of, you know, my experience there, sorry, but, you know, I mean, that's my other experience out there. Livestock districts is one example of a, of a, of a property owner, I'm not sure about any of the other districts in, uh, chapter one nine eight, which is, you know, deals everything from road districts to library districts and so on and so forth, but.
It's always been concerned that, as far as Phoenix is concerned, living in the city, it might like, occurred the last time a little bit, because we had people saying they're from Phoenix when they're speaking, but not from Phoenix, and, you know, it's pretty well defined here in the city, if you're past, um, the last road in Phoenix Hill subdivision, you're outside the city, if you're outside, uh, past Samuel Lane on Culver, you're outside the city, if you're out past Creekside, uh, the, um, um, the, the last mobile home park going down ninety-nine, that's our, our, our way is, is outside the city. There's a couple of pockets that are inside the city that are within our boundaries, actually, there's two mobile home parks, if you start going towards the old seven eleven, believe it or not, they're actually county property, and on Culver Road, there's a couple houses that are actually county property, they look like they're in Phoenix. On Camp Baker Road, there's a few anomalies there also. But, but to me, if somebody owning property in the city or renting and paying taxes and they have, like you said, skin in the game.
Yeah.
She has a question.
I, I just want to see, the, the conversation about paying taxes kind of confuses me, I understand the point you were making, that makes sense, but I hope that we're not trying to go the direction of trying to assess who pays taxes and who doesn't, because being a resident of Phoenix, um, is enough to qualify somebody, it doesn't matter whether you're a renter or an owner, uh, because then we're excluding by class, um, different people, so I just want to make sure that's not the conversation.
I absolutely agree with you, I'm just trying to find what properties in this, uh, are in the city, and if you're living in that property, there's taxes being paid by a landlord, maybe you're not paying taxes itself, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, so there are, in the county clerk's office, um, there are district maps that outline, so whether or not something is in the city limits sometimes looks different, if like you're on Google Maps, or like if you're in the county clerk's office, so we can easily download that map and put it on our website for folks who want to check.
That's a great idea.
If we're in the city limits.
Yeah, for Evan also, but were you finished with making that's your point?
Not quite, I think what you're talking about is absolutely correct, we have many different ways of defining boundaries, but I want to make sure we're talking about the same boundaries when we're talking about this one, uh, because we ran into that problem earlier, a few meetings ago, when we're talking about newsletters going out and finding people who are not in the zip code that they're being sent to, but they were in fact within our boundaries. And so I think one thing the staff's going to have to do is clean up that act to find out in all aspects who the citizens are and make sure that they are appropriately, uh, given things if they owe things, and that they're, in this case, we're discussing here appropriate to, uh, being within the city boundaries for doing things. So I just want to get that clarification before we get too far into the discussion here.
Robert, did you have a comment?
No, I, I want to clarify too, the residency, I think that's enough that covers everything.
Yeah.
So, I'm just looking, reading through here where we can have one outside, where's, where's it, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Section three, section twenty-one.
Right, we can have one member delivering, who live outside the city limits. Now, I don't know exactly how long has that, has it been since April two thousand fifteen? That was added, or?
Uh, actually, there are multiple versions, or I, I should say, this ordinance, um,
Mark, sorry.
Had two, um, outside the city limits, it's also had one, there's been kind of multiple iterations of the Parks and Greenway, um, commission, and so there's been multiple ordinances that have outlined that. So it's changed, it's been two, it's been one, it, uh, depends on which, which version of the ordinance.
I, uh, I have, well, I'm going to go just for a second.
Yes, go ahead.
But I, I, I agree with you, I think you should just skin the game, if you're making recommendations to the city, staff, city council, I think you should just skin the game, and, um, be living in the city, and you're paying property tax, either you're renting or not paying directly, or you're, uh, paying directly, and, uh, it does kind of rub me a little bit, I mean, it's not what I would say, but rub me the wrong way, to people come into our city and say, please start spending money this way, or please start doing it this way or that way, even though you don't live here, you use our facilities, which you're not paying for, and they're telling us how to run those facilities, it does get to me a little bit. But you, you got it, Doug.
Um, yes, I wondered about, um, fairness across the board, is there any other committees or commissions, um, or boards that have, have anyone outside the city on them, does Phoenix have any of those, is this the only one?
We had an ad hoc committee, which was helping with developing the comprehensive plan, and there were two positions allowed outside the city boundaries, and that was be, I think it was because we're actually going to affect their boundaries and going to bump upright against their property at some point in time, so they had a vested interest in the boundary determination. Sarah?
So, we also did that for the planning commission, though, we had a planning commissioner who lived outside of the, the city, and I think that Chris and Jim, you both agreed that that person should, um, should be on the planning commission, I don't know if they've moved back into the city limits since that time, um.
They, they actually left the planning commission, that was Marcia Marcel, and she left the planning commission because she was outside the city, then when she came back into the city, she again joined the planning commission.
I thought that she, okay.
But she had, she had to leave because she wasn't in the city.
I, um, just to continue on the flood, um, I wonder, I don't know, I, I wonder if having like one member from outside of the, the city who are like living in a very nearby area, it's really all that problematic, um, so there are areas that are really close, like Chris was saying, up by the seven eleven, that's actually county property, right, but it's so close to Phoenix that the people who live there are using parks and are serviced by the parks, um, and eventually some of that area actually will come into Phoenix, right? So I wonder if we're not being a little kind of too picky by saying, I mean, it's one position, um, in the, the way that it's written, um, and there's, you know, not like, it shouldn't be somebody who lives in like Ashland, right, that would be, like, not make any sense, but I wonder if we shouldn't box ourselves in too much for somebody who like lives on the periphery, who's like, I don't know, up in PH three, which is that area right there, who I'm sure uses the Phoenix parks, and eventually that area would be coming in, can we?
But, but I think your point is that they're not paying taxes, whether they're one property or from the Phoenix boundary, or in Ashland, and that somebody in Ashland could come join, like, we do have a lot of people that come from Ashland and Talent and other places, for some reason, our council gets a lot of input from other cities, I don't see that in a lot of other cities, when they go to city council meetings in Jacksonville or Eagle Point or Central Point, they never have people from outside their city coming in and saying, hey, you should do it this way, only our city for some reason, we're kind of prone to that habit for.
What do you mean?
Uh, but, um, when they go to city council meetings like Central Point, or, uh, Ashland, or Eagle Point, there's never, I've never seen people there that are saying, hey, you need to do things a particular way, and telling their council, you should do this, or you should do that. Our, our city tends to have, like, last meeting, we had two people from Talent commenting on the pest management program, and nobody from Phoenix, and they're kind of saying, hey, you should do things this way, I don't see that in other cities.
I, I have seen that in other cities, and I think that it makes sense, but one, we're talking about two different things, we're talking about people coming in and giving testimony, so we're, you have a neighboring community who feels that they could be impacted by like a policy or something, I think it makes sense for them to come in and to say, this is a factor you should take into consideration, and I've seen that happening in neighbor, neighboring communities, I think that makes sense, but, you know, for, in terms of like sitting on a committee, maybe it does make more sense, like, for that to be focused predominantly in the city, again, I, like, I wonder why we're getting so boxed in with it, though, um, to like exclude people who are like right on the edge of the city, that makes me feel like a little, I, I just have questions about that, but, um, but going back to the main point, I don't think we should like exclude people from commenting in public comments from Phoenix.
No, 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 I'm not saying we should do that, I'm saying, um, I, I just, it's like an offshoot of the point that, that you're making, I, I'd much prefer not to have people from outside the city on the Parks Commission, that's, that's, that's my stance.
Oh, that's, okay.
Yeah, that, that's where I'm coming from also, so I agree with your point, and, uh, that's where I'm coming from.
But we do want to keep that collaborative, everybody can come in and put their information, their ideas in.
Absolutely.
In the council meeting, but not.
Oh, you have to.
In a voting.
Yep, it's a totally meeting.
Yeah.
Did I say what you think tomorrow?
Yeah, I had, well, I had a couple of comments, is it, you know, should we establish some kind of a county boundary that we stick within, I mean, it sounds like, you know, where's the county people, we have a lot of people who live out in the county who consider themselves Phoenix, you know, is there something, it sounds like, you know, should we establish a boundary that if you're in this boundary, that's considered county, but yet close enough to Phoenix? You know, I'm just trying, I mean, I'm trying to understand why we put this in here in the first place, or we went from two to one, um, you know, I'm just trying to exclude them, why, you know, county people can't.
I don't like that.
The only other, the only other boundary I can think of would be your regional problem solving boundary, the one that, I mean, if you're, you're talking about the ones, what was the people, I, I didn't sure what your letters were, I was not here when you guys were going through that one.
You mean that urban growth boundary?
There, urban growth boundary that was, you know, that's there, that hasn't actually been, you know, brought in.
Right, because the idea there is that those, that is coming into the city.
Right.
Um, over the next couple of years, so that includes PH three, that includes across the freeway, nobody's over there yet, but, well, there are a few people are over there yet, um, and that, that, I, I think makes sense, because those people are coming in, so, um, I would hate to exclude people from the process, especially when we're talking about like intentionally building parks out that way, um, people who are going to be impacted by that, I think it makes sense for them to be on, and then we're still creating like a really distinct boundary, like, that's not Ashland, that's not Talent, that's, um, that's got to be Phoenix.
Well, we do have, you know, we can change the ordinance to say, one person from the urban growth boundary also, if you wanted to, but it's, it's a suggestion.
I have a philosophical problem that needs to be resolved here, there's a difference between contributing ideas coming to a forum and contributing ideas, and actually having control over the process of deciding things. What I don't like is having people who are not citizens deciding what the rules will be and what the, how the money might be spent, of course, we have to spend the money, but they come to us, but they're not citizens of the city. Anybody from all over can come in and contribute ideas at whatever forum that's in, the urban growth boundary people are not citizens, they should have no say over how we spend our money, but they can contribute their ideas in open public forums, and I have no problem with that, but I don't think we should have people, and I think we should be consistent with every committee and commission we have, either everybody can come in and join us or nobody can, and I just don't like people who don't have skin in the game in terms of contributing money to the process that's being spent on, making decisions on how to spend the money. I don't like that, okay? I don't mind the people who are affected by something, coming in and saying, gee, it's really bad, can you do this and that, and agitate and, you know, talk about the ideas and contribute, but not deciding the final decision unless you're an actual citizen. It's kind of like somebody with a green card coming from France, can they vote in a presidential election? No, why? Because they're not citizens, they live in the boundaries, but they're not citizens. And I think the philosophy here is we either need to be consistent, we start bringing people who are not citizens in to the budget committee and other things, or we consistently provide all of our organizations with the same structure, and that's kind of where I'm at right now, because anybody can contribute ideas, they're all welcome. But the decision has to be by citizens, because they're the ones that are paying for it through their taxes, so that's where I'm at on that particular subject.
I, I agree with you, and we, we do need to get some public comments in just a moment or two, we're going to have a little more discussion, but, I'm just going to ask, are there any points that people want to hit before we make some decisions on where we want to go with the ordinance, still to let the public speak, of course.
I don't have anything further.
Sarah, do you have any particular points on the ordinance that you want to clarify or talk about?
No, I don't, I just generally think it's a good idea to put, um, I think there was a lot of confusion, um, prior to, to having like a really clear ordinance, and I think it would be great to ensure that we have similar ordinances, and I'm not saying we don't, but I don't even know that we do.
Yeah.
For all of our committees, so it's just very clear, um, to us as a council and to people who sign up to be on committees, like what they're getting into and what the scope of their purview is.
Yeah, and I, I kind of like the fact that the, the Parks Committee will not set their own bylaws and get them in, into it, and get them to establish what they like to do, and when, you know, there's some guardrails you have to abide by, but I thought it was a good idea. Anybody else want to hit any other points?
I got a couple of things that I think need fixing, um, if you look on page twenty-two of our document.
Yeah.
At the top, there's a paragraph number five, says working conjunction with the city committees, comma, boards, I think it's committees and boards, but something is missing, either there was a third slot, or there's only two, and a conjunction of and is supposed to be used.
So you want to ta, take away the comma and just put and?
I think removing the comma and replacing with an and actually makes grammatical sense.
Aaron, do you have that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, halfway down is section three, membership, and you go one, two, three, four, four lines down, it's a little different than the previous line, this one says the mayor or city council member appointed by the mayor shall serve as lays onto the committee, what's missing in this sentence is what is in the previous sentence, it says with the consent of the city council. In the first sentence, the mayor gets to say who he would like.
Yeah.
Recommend, and the council gets to vote on it, but should it not be the same thing for this liaison?
That, just to be consistent, I think that's a good point, that's the way it is in our council rules.
Yeah, so I just think somehow a phrase got left off.
I'm the one who put this together, and so, um, I guess the way and the mindset is Parks and Recreation Committee shall consist of the five members to be appointed by the mayor with the consent of the council, and that's to appoint the five members to the actual committee, the second part, Lord, says the mayor or a city council member appointed by the mayor shall serve as a liaison of the committee, so my understanding is the mayor appoints the liaison, am I wrong?
And the other, just to be consistent, and the other, all the other liaisons to a different committee, you know, we had a little brouhaha the first meeting that we had, and the, the mayor does appoint, but at the consent of council.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I take your point, and if you just added something in there with, with the consent of the mayor, the mayor or the city council, there's something. Right, the word mayor, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes it consistent.
Does that make sense?
That's fine, I, the, the rule about the council liaison appointments.
Yeah.
Is in the council rules.
Yeah.
So it is what it is.
Mm-hmm.
And so whoever that liaison is, isn't being appointed in this ordinance.
Yeah, I understand.
But we can do it if, if, it seems superfluous to me, but that's, that's fine, we can add if you guys want to.
But, Jim?
Well, yeah, and it is, I mean, it's fine, we'll add it.
Just talking, President recommends that the secretaries, with the consent, twice in that sentence, of setting of it, of the balance. Uh, the last thing I have is on page twenty-three, which is the next page, section nine, removal from committee. What I'm seeing in there is in the second line, without valid reason, that implies, that's a concept.
Yep.
But to get to a concept of reality, somebody has to be the recipient of the information and the adjudicator, and that's not listed here, so what is the process for some member to get a valid versus an invalid, because there's two sides to that, to get a valid reason, who is the arbitrator of that? That's what's missing from here.
It's a cruise through Australia, you have a valid reason, or?
Well, that's the point.
Well, it, it's, it's the city council.
This one's important, because it's saying you can remove them for that.
Yeah.
And if you're not going to get a lawsuit on your, your sense, you have to have a valid set of decision criteria of what's valid and invalid, and who makes the decision, and how that's communicated to that person, that's missing here, this is a flawed paragraph.
The last sentence actually says, in addition, a committee member may be removed for misconduct with consent of a council, so that would be the person or people who would remove them.
But only if they don't have valid reasons, and no, there's no definition of valid and invalid, so nobody can make a decision.
That, that's really up to the council, so you guys should let us know what, how you want that to read, what, what does valid mean to you?
And that's, that's the point that's missing here, needs to be debated, but it's also first, before you do that, who's going to receive the information and make that decision of whether it's invalid, because after you click off three, it comes to the council, okay? So who is it, is it the person who's in charge of the committee in consultation with all the other members, is it only the person in charge, is it the city manager?
Well, we appoint, so it would make sense that we remove, right, maybe that needs to be explicitly stated, is your suggestion, suggesting, and then I wonder, what, so Chris, you would know more about this than any of us, so what, what metrics do you use in excusing like councilors when you say somebody has an excused absence, what does that mean?
Until they make a phone call, and we know that they're going to be away, and they're just not missing an action for no good reason.
Okay, so can we use that standard here?
We certainly could, but that means that, uh, it's going to have to be the committee chairman, it's going to have to be written in here as the adjudicator.
Right.
So they receive the communication, or they fail to receive the communication, adjudicate it, and when they click off three that they think are invalid, then they have to bring it to the committee for dismissal, or to the council.
What, what if it said, um, if a member of the Parks Recreation Committee, without a valid reason, as determined by the remaining Parks Commission members, misses three regular committees, so you have a Parks Commission determining whether it's valid or invalid reason, and then there's a check and balance, you guys come to the city council and explain what that valid or invalid reason was.
Yeah, I wouldn't worry about this so much if we didn't have the dismissal portion of this.
But that makes sense, we said that the remaining members of the Parks Commission are the arbiter of whether it's a valid or invalid reason.
Yes.
And then it comes to city council as a check and balance.
Yeah.
And they can explain why they consider it valid or invalid.
Yeah, I like the concept, but we didn't have a concept here, so we had no idea what we were doing, but we're threatening to dismiss people without having a process, so, yeah, that's fine.
So, how do you want it to read?
So I, I would have it read that if a member of the Parks Recreation Committee, without a valid reason, as determined by the remaining members of the Parks Commission, misses three regular, so just as determined by the remaining members of the Parks Commission.
Okay.
After valid reason.
Got it.
I think that should hit it pretty good. Was there more, Jim?
I was just throwing up my thoughts, when I first started reading this, I got to section five on officers, and then I wrote a note, and then I, there were answers in the next two paragraphs about how we're going to rotate getting into the positions, so that was taken care of, okay, I'm good.
Go ahead, Andrew.
I just wonder on section ten, um, having the bylaws, the city of Phoenix Parks Recreation Committee to be created by Parks Recreation Committee, is that further, is that brought to city council to see what it is within, is there guidelines and, and, um, bumpers that keep that within reason where we'd want it?
That's a good question.
Does it help any that I am, I'm presenting a couple examples of bylaws, they've actually already created their bylaws, there were, and they actually approved them in January, but then all this came about, so, um, there were a couple things in the bylaws that needed a little bit of cleanup, um, and so I was going to give them some sample bylaws that they can do work from, and they're just bylaws that we give to other cities that they can kind of look at.
Okay.
But, and to your point, it's approved in the, in the end, determines whether the bylaws are approved or not.
Yes.
So, but maybe where it says to be created by the Parks and Recreation Committee and approved by the city council.
Yeah.
Okay, and that, and I would very rarely want to. Okay, and that, and I would very rarely wanna take away or limit the power of the Parks Agreement Commission or any commission if they came and said, "here's the bylaw if approved," I'd very rarely wanna change it or just dismiss it because you have to empower those, those members. But if we did that at the end and just said "to be created by the Parks Recreation Committee and then approved by city council," I think it would be okay. Do you agree?
I agree.
Anybody against that?
No, I think it would work out nicely because we can also catch something that they made a mistake on, the concept, but not a process.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Sure. And staff will get it and file it for the city council. Okay. Were there any points regarding the ordinance that you guys wanna hit again before I ask for public comment? Okay, we have more discussion afterwards, but Lila, why don't you come on up?
Good evening, thank you for letting me read a statement by David Vanderbilt, who resides at two thirty-six Jared Court in Phoenix, who cannot be here. "I was a member of Phoenix Parks and Greenway Commission for eight years, ending December two thousand eighteen. I wanna make it clear that my resignation was unrelated to my, to any conflicts with this commission or commission members. I found serving on a commission to be a satisfying experience and an eye-opener as well. I encourage citizens of Phoenix to volunteer to participate in a city function of their choice. The volunteers who serve as mayor and city council members are well-meaning and very giving of their time and are committed to making the city the best it can be. We owe them our gratitude. I also wish to recognize and commend all citizens who volunteered to serve on city commissions or committees or in any other capacity. Rihanna Sines joined Parks and Greenway on October two thousand eighteen and voiced concerns regarding pest management in the city of Phoenix. An agreement was made for further discussion during the month of November. At the November public meeting, citizens of Phoenix as well as Talent and Ashman were present and asked to relate their experiences and suggestions, followed by a presentation by Rihanna. She was interrupted a number of times and found it difficult to give her presentation. I found the interruptions to be counterproductive and they may have created some tension." "This was disappointing, as I respect all of my ex-fellow commission members and know them to be well-meaning people who contribute to the community in many ways. As for the use of these agricultural products, my background is in retail where I sold these synthetic products for twenty-two years. I watched many of these synthetics enter the marketplace and about as many of these products leave the marketplace because of recall when products were found to be injurious to human health. Agricultural chemicals became an important part in the use of increasing food production in the nineteen forties, when the world population went over two million. Today, the use of these chemicals have become big business and the demand for and use of these products has increased at an astounding pace. Today's most popular synthetic is a glyphosate introduced as Roundup. Roundup is currently banned or restricted in many countries due to the linkage to health issues. Children, the elderly and people with compromised immune systems are especially vulnerable to these synthetic products. I would like to see the city come up with a plan to minimize and/or eliminate use of synthetic herbicide and pesticide products. Lastly, I am an advocate for a city Parks and Rec Committee and like much of the plan as presented, I feel there should be further clarification in section two regarding item number eight, which reads as follows. Review and comment on fundraising efforts and donations made on behalf of the city of Phoenix Parks and Recreation. In years past, Parks and Greenway members have solicited donations from businesses and individuals for the benefit of city-sponsored events, for example, Dog Days and the Easter Egg Hunt. Does this language reflect their ability to continue this effort going forward?"
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Rihanna?
Good evening, my name's Rihanna Sims, I live at four two eight three Culver Road, uh, Phoenix, Oregon.
I'm gonna stop just for a second.
That's my, I share my mailing address, is that right? Is that correct?
I'm not gonna take away from your time, but.
Okay, good.
But make sure that we know in the minutes that she lives outside the city boundaries and she lives in the unincorporated Jackson County, if you would. Thank you.
And I live a block from Culver Park, we go to Culver Park almost every day. Is this my time for testimony or not?
I, I, I won't take your time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I won't take your time, but I know we covered this last time.
Excuse me.
No, I won't take from your time.
Okay, but you're interrupting my testimony.
I'll just take one second.
Okay.
So, we, we commented last time about people commenting on agenda items and non-agenda items and they gotta say where they're from. If you're from the city of Phoenix, say you're city of Phoenix, unincorporated Jackson County, unincorporated Jackson County, Talent, Talent, whatever it is, but I just wanna make sure that we do, because for the minutes, it's gonna say people from Talent or people from unincorporated Jackson County and I'm just gonna make sure that we're really distinguishing whether there's a citizen that's living in the city of Phoenix, you know, a Phoenix citizen or somebody not in the city of Phoenix. And we talked about this last time and I appreciate you testifying and being here to comment, but we just wanna make sure that we recognize that you're not actually living in the city of Phoenix, you're just outside the city of Phoenix, okay? Thank you. You have three minutes.
Uh, I think that it's dynamic for the council tonight to have heard from Lila and Dave who have commented on the, um, on the disrespect and interrupting that's happened and, um, I feel interrupted and disrespected in my testimony and, um, it's my, it's my understanding that we give our mailing address and then we're able to provide testimony without interruption and that's a way of showing respect for citizens of Jackson County and of volunteers for the city of Phoenix that serve on a commission. And so already I'm, I'm, I think the culture of the Parks and Greenway is being reflected in this meeting today. I have not been able to read the ordinance, there was only one copy available tonight, there's just a few of us here, but there's only one, uh, copy for all of us to share to actually read the ordinance and so it's difficult to be prepared for this meeting because we haven't really had access to the information. Um, I would like to welcome and acknowledge Patty and Jill from the Phoenix Garden Club who heard about how our parks are being maintained and had concerns and wanted to come to the meeting to check this out. So I know that there's been the concern from the council that people from outside Phoenix are coming in to express their opinions, but when in fact, the people who have skin in the game are those who use the parks. Those are our children, my three-year-old and my one-year-old, we are part, we use the park services, we very much care for the parks and we have a lot of skin in the game and, um, that's part of why I wanted to be part of the commission. Um, I'm not trying to tell anyone how to run facilities, I'm asking questions about are we making the best decisions with the information we have. We know that science changes over time and so we wanna make sure to stay up on that science. I think it's essential that we're able to contribute to ideas and contribute to our parks and participate as volunteers for the city of Phoenix and give our time, we're away from our families, we're, make other sacrifices to participate for the city of Phoenix and so, um, request respect in that way. Um, I am wondering about the difference between, um, the title of a commission and the title of a committee. I see that that's one of the changes proposed, having just read through this very quickly. But I, I would just hope that the city council here is really encouraging active, um, citizen engagement and that, I would hope that the city council would, um, celebrate citizens who want to be involved and who love their community and their town and that that would actually be encouraged instead of discouraged by focusing on, um, on needing a resident and a volunteer of the city to identify that they live outside the city limits in the beginning of their testimony. Again, I live a, a block from, um, the parks and we receive the mayor's newsletter and we very much consider ourselves residents of Phoenix. Uh, my children will go to Phoenix schools and will participate in, in Phoenix events because we love this town. We are, I'm really hoping that the, this, the council will, um, look critically at how this process has unfolded and what information it has revealed and, um, how we're trying to move forward in a good way for our parks and for our citizens and also taking care of, of those who work for Public Works. Part of what Dave had brought up.
I gave you, you have four minutes, I'll give you another thirty seconds.
Okay, excuse me. Um, I just wanna remind you about what was, um, that we had shared about what was in the, the Parks Master Plan and that, um, people, citizens of Phoenix were interviewed and that they, they want support that's being represented on the commission, so, um, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comments on the ordinance?
Yeah, I do.
Sure.
So I think that this kinda gets at the heart of having those hard-line rules about who's in a city and who's not. When you have a person like Rihanna who, her kids are going to Phoenix school, she's literally like what, a block outside of city limits, then we should exercise discretion, which is what councils are supposed to do, as opposed to setting those hard-line rules. And I have noticed, um, some of the behaviors that Rihanna has just flagged for us and I think we do need to exercise more respect for people who have like given their time to the city of Phoenix, who want to be involved. And I wonder, I mean, I honestly, I have to bring up here that I wonder if people are taking a hard line at this point specifically to exclude one person, especially because we have made exceptions for people who don't live within city limits before. And if that's the case, I think that that's, I'm getting emotional because I think that that's really upsetting. And I hope that that's not the case and that's why I think that we should exercise our discretion and leave the ordinance the way that it's written because then we can make exceptions for people who live a couple of feet outside of the city limits and I think that just makes sense, as opposed to unnecessarily excluding people who for all intents and purposes live in Phoenix. And I also understand that the tax argument people are making, but they, they live in other taxing districts that go to Phoenix as well. So, people who live in that district pay into the school district, they pay into other taxing districts, I'm sure. So, I think we just need to ask ourselves why we're doing this and why, why we're making such a hard line rule here. And that's something I would ask everybody to consider.
I can make a couple of points. One of our speakers mentioned expressing opinions and everyone is welcome to express their opinions here at the city council meetings, whether you're an ex-house outside of the boundary or you're from actual Eagle Point, everyone's welcome to express opinions. I can't think of an exception that we, where we allow someone to come into a committee or commission. We actually had just the opposite happen, that's long ago, on the, on the planning commission. A woman left the city of Phoenix and she stopped attending meetings with the city planning commission. As soon as she came back into the city, she was allowed again to join the planning commission. She just lived close by, just outside the city.
The CAC, what's that, that we talked about?
The CAC is a little bit different, we allow people to come in the CAC because of our border expansion. We allow people to come into that, um, committee because of the effect that the expansion had on their bordering properties or their properties within that particular border or expansion. Like I said earlier, if you wanted to include people that are in government for a boundary, I'm okay with it. I know Jim's not okay with it, but, uh, yeah. And I'd be just fine with just having Phoenix citizens represented on the Parks Commission, just like they are on the planning commission and other committees. Anybody else?
As to number eight on page twenty-one, or twenty-two that David mentioned about review and comment on fundraising efforts and donations made on behalf of the city of Phoenix Park Immigration. The verbiage on that, uh, how is that different than what is currently being done on the old one? Is there, is there a change in that because of that verbiage?
I don't know if that language is added or changed. Or if it's from the.
I wanna say it's the same language from Talent and, um, we already have still a review and take away that was in there.
Okay.
You know, I can, I can hit that a little bit. We had, we had one, actually, financial contribution, I think it was a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars contributed from Mrs. Paxton. Her husband, Darryl Paxton, was mayor here for many years and he was one of the founding fathers of Blue Heron Park. And she gave us a chunk of money at one point in time and then she asked it to be used for something within the park system. And I think city council at that point had discretion over what to do with that money. I'm not sure if Parks commented on it or not, but we, we advised her by her wishes to spend, do something in Blue Heron Park. That's the only, that's the only time I've ever thought of that, it's a contribution. I know Dave's thinking, I think Dave's thinking about someone that contributes a basket or some money towards a, a basket with the Easter bin or something like that, but I think this really pertains to someone making a financial contribution to the city.
Okay.
And I, that's the way I read it. Make sense?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I also wanna speak about someone outside the city, is it equal representation from every committee? What would stop someone else from coming in and saying, "I wanna be on the budget committee"? Is there a problem with that, um, having it be across the board even for, uh, people outside? Is that set a precedent for something else even though I know we've done this for a while? And how long have we done the two, I wonder how long, has that been since the start of the commission, do you know?
As, as, as far back as I saw Parks and Greenway Commission ordinance, there's only been two previous that I remember. There's always been an outside person allowed, but it fluctuated between one and two people, depending on the amendment to the ordinance.
So, kinda back to my question, so why would we change it now? What has changed that we would change that now?
To be consistent across all committees, to create consistency in the city.
So do other committees not say that, that doesn't not have a permit, uh, provision for, you know?
I, I don't believe that the other committees allow for someone outside of the city limits.
Everything I found in the research.
I'm not aware of any other committee that allows that, but.
I'm positive budget doesn't, you know, plan it because someone had to leave the city, when they had to say they had to leave the.
And other cities do not have it either.
Well, I would.
Best of my client who was upset that she couldn't, she goes, "Why can't I?"
I would entertain a motion to change that, if you'd like to make it so that if you wanna be on the Parks Commission, you have to be from the city of Phoenix.
One second.
Ask me if you wanted to do, I didn't say anything.
Oh, okay.
Or, or somebody has to make a motion if you want to.
I make a motion that it just be city residents that serve on the commission to keep it equal across the board for other commissions, boards and committees.
Do a second? Some seconds? More discussion? We're gonna do a roll call, okay?
Yes.
Counselor Schuyer?
Yes.
Counselor Carter?
Yes.
Counselor Westover?
No.
Okay, just the motion passes, three to one. Was there anything else on the, and I think we've gone through it in pretty good detail, but is there anything else you guys wanna discuss regarding this? It's not gonna go into effect this evening, we still have to come back for a first reading and then a second reading. Anybody else wanna comment on it before the first reading? Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda. In regards to the strategic plan. Aaron, do you wanna speak to this a little bit? I know you talked to Dave Kiner about it.
Yeah, I sure did. A couple of council meetings ago, there were, well, actually there were multiple conversations about strategic planning and, uh, about strategic planning and, you know, it's good practice to review the strategic plan, maybe do strategic planning every couple of years. And the question was raised as to whether or not Dave Kanter, who was the interim city manager and facilitated the last strategic plan, would be available to help us with reviewing that process and creating a new strategic plan. I contacted Dave and we talked about it and he was able to get me a scope of service or a proposal. So, that's what's being presented to you. Basically, it's a half day. There's quite a bit of kind of homework that staff would do to get prepared for that and then he would come in and probably on a Saturday for four hours or so. And that's what's presented to you. The cost is twenty-five hundred dollars and I just kind of want some direction from council as to if you want me to move forward with a contract with Mr. Kanter.
I love Dave, but boy. I think I shook it off. Anyway, it's important that we do strategic planning, of course, and I know Sarah's really been into wanting to set that up, so do you want to tackle this first, Sarah, or anybody else want to speak on it?
Maybe I'll just start if it's going to come in. I think it's helpful, I found the strategic plan session to be a time of like really building consensus and getting to know one another and finding out where we had shared values around things and I think we actually did a lot. I think it would be particularly helpful for newer folks on the council too, to just see what's actually out there, what's laid out and to have some time set aside to do that and see kind of where we can check off some boxes and where we still have a lot of work to do. I think if we don't have a plan together, we're going to be not an effective team moving forward and I think that Dave is a good person to help us do that. So, I think it's a worthy investment.
I concur one hundred percent.
I'm happy.
One of the advantages we have is a few things in the plan that are already set completely and they can be taken out and can put in a historical plot. But now you folks have the chance to come in and say, "This is important to me." How does it stack, wrap and stack with all the things that others want that are already in there or all this that have been here for a while too? Now I have another couple of years of experience and maybe there's some things to add and David is very good at handling that kind of process. He really is. And he turns out a product that we can all live with. I pay twice the money. Strike different. But, no, he's very good.
You go higher, you can hire. Full day, full day.
I hire once less.
Seriously, it would be a great benefit even to those who've been here for a while.
I would be happy for that kind of information, that kind of collaboration.
Counselor Rutter?
I agree. I think it's good, be nice information to have.
No, I went through, I read through the whole thing again and I can just see areas we got to scratch off this, done, 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 done. We've done a pretty good job of accomplishing quite a few things and I can't see a lot of other things that we need to add at this point. I'm just wondering myself, will the new city councilors want to add a lot of different things and really have a lot of input into it? I just don't want to go there and think that, you know, there's not a lot of changes that you guys would like to make. Twenty-five hundred dollars to gain, want to make some changes and express our opinions and make it different the way it is now. There's just a few changes that you'd want to make, I don't think for twenty-five hundred bucks, but. What do you think about working it, will you want to make some changes?
I want to see what's available. I want to see what it's, you know, we're, I'm looking into this, there's still a lot that I have to learn and there's still, you know, if there's more, something I can gain out of this.
Go through the process.
Yes.
I'm fine.
Yes.
So, I think about what Dave told us that we could work together, the byproduct was we created a plan.
Good, good.
I think we have consensus that we want to do that and I guess it just lead up to a, you want to do like a poll, an online poll, this data group for everybody? Would have to be a.
I had a proposed motion in here, but if you, I can work from consensus if that's.
So, I'll just go ahead and make a motion. So, I move to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Dave Kanter for goal-setting facilitation.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye. The second.
The second.
The second.
Fourteen.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right, great.
Thank you.
So, I'm not sure how you have to do this, but it would have to be like a half day on Saturday. I guess we could do a long evening session, I'm not sure what everybody thinks, but I'm okay with either.
Dave is available on a Friday or Saturday and he's got a couple of Saturdays available, not until May, but he suggested a Saturday.
I'm ready for a Saturday.
What's that?
But then you use to conduct.
Here.
Can you send us a couple of dates, Erin, and then we can see what works?
Yep.
Awesome, thank you. Erin, I'm having a really hard time hearing you tonight. Are you having a hard time?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to speak into your mic because I'm having a really hard time hearing you over there?
Thank you.
Talk, we're not going to hear you.
Yeah, did I go in here and get into that? Robert, some things will work on Saturdays.
I have, well, I coach high school baseball, so we have double headers on Saturdays, but after the second week of May, I don't have, as according to May eighteenth on, I don't have anything on Saturday.
Perfect. Okay, good to know.
Great. Yeah. Okay. Well, that's all we have on the agenda tonight, it's only one hour, we're doing, we're doing great. I want to go around the table and, oh, I'm sorry, we have a city manager, Tom, or city attorney?
Well, I can, you may not know, but I'm also president of the Southern Oregon Historical Society and we just got through finishing our strategic plan. And, you know, I have to agree with you guys, I think it's a good idea, just for what it's worth, I know I'm just piping in here, but, you know, I've watched fences being built and no one had a plan and I've seen the fence, you know, it gets to A to B, but to get there was going like this and, and the other example is, is, you know, you can sit there and walk along and can watch your feet, but with a plan, you can look up and see where you're going and get where you need to go. So, you really do need a plan and it's a good idea. I think it's always important. So, with that said, that's just my little two cents. The other thing here is, is that on April first, I won't be here, so I'm going to, I'm sure I'll have to make arrangements or whatever, if you need someone to replace, if I want some, if you want someone to replace me for that day, I'm going to be in Washington DC so, at another continuing legal education program. So, regarding municipal law again. So, anyway, so I'll be gone April first. So, that's our next meeting.
I think we'll survive.
Yeah.
As well, but we'll survive.
Yeah, I think you will. I think you will.
We'll keep it in the light agenda.
Okay, there you go. Well, I noticed there was a couple of things that you had, which were.
On the future agenda.
Yeah, you did. Some things that I was, I'd been watching, volunteer policy was one where I kind of wanted to make sure that, I wanted to, I'll talk about that, other than that. So, yeah.
I wanted to let the council know that we received proposals to do the bioswale project, which there, there's more than just the functionality of it, but there's also landscape and there was going to be a trail, things like that on the top of it. The proposals came back three to five times higher than expected, outside the possibility of us completing the project. So, what we've done was we spoke with RBSS and kind of confirmed, what do we have to do as far as the functional aspect of it? We also reviewed the project with both the landscape architect and the, we got two proposals and we met with the person that gave us the lower of the two and kind of talked about the scope. And I wanted to let the council know that what we've decided to do is use our public works department to complete that project. It's something that Ray is, you know, he's, he's only got a couple or a few more weeks with us, but he kind of wants to do that project and he's talked to his team and they feel very confident that they can complete the project. So, what's going to happen over the next two to three weeks is public works is going to be working, not exclusively, but a lot of work is going to be going on behind the Civic Center building here. And it should take three to four weeks to complete the project, but they're really excited about it and I think it's going to be something that they're going to be able to kind of put their name to and feel proud of and we're going to get what was conceptually designed and like I said, it's going to have kind of our own public works, you know, stamp on it. So, I think you'll be, I think you'll be happy with what we do and just wanted to kind of give you guys that information and, you know, you're not going to see a contractor, you know, or another construction outfit working back there, but you're going to see our guys working back there and they're going to, they're going to take a lot of pride in that, so. Anyway, that's something that I wanted to let you guys know about.
I think I'm a curiosity now, how much were, you say three to five times? What were they looking at charges for the bioswale project?
The high, the high bid was a little over half a million dollars. The low bid was just under four hundred thousand. And we had expected the project to be about, about a hundred, a hundred and twenty maybe. So, yeah, we were very surprised.
They have a big, they have a big fat budget here, right?
Right.
Was there anything else, Erin?
I just want to let you guys know that I have, what's the word? In any event, I will have a self-evaluation memo to the council this week. You guys should have all gotten the information from all of the directors. That's something that, yeah, it should have been in your boxes.
Okay.
And, you know, I apologize, I've had, I don't want to make too many excuses, but with Ray leaving, I've kind of had to step up quite a bit in regard to the public works projects, make sure I'm up to speed and a couple of other, you know, little things. But in any event, you will have that this week, so.
Do you need our physical boxes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
I don't remember getting them. Okay, got it.
Good deal. Well, thank you and that's all I have.
But it should be in your.
Yeah, yeah.
I have this in inbox.
Okay, got it.
Millennial.
Especially if you're going.
Because I checked, I did check, I must have checked early on Friday because.
Yeah, yeah, it was delivered on Friday, I think.
I'm just kind of curious, how's it going with Ray at your place? I don't know if you're ready to speak to that for a second or not, but.
I am.
How's that physical?
I don't have too much to say because we have had no applicants. Ray and I talked about it a little bit more this afternoon, don't really know where we can look, that we aren't already looking. One of the things that often happens is people apply for a position closer to the date that it closes.
Right.
And it closes on Friday of this week, so I expect I'm going to get a couple of dozen, you know, in the next few days.
Pause a second.
I'm very, yeah, very confident that they'll come pouring in. No, we really, we haven't had any applicants so far and like I said, I did talk to Ray about it. We don't know where else to put it. I also talked to JC kind of about the process of posting it and then maybe, maybe holding off for, you know, a couple of weeks or something before reposting it. You know, sometimes there's a little bit of, sometimes people in public works are looking at a particular time of year, but that's not something that you can count on, so. Anyway, long-winded answer, we don't have any good candidates yet.
You wore all of your hats up in shady clothes, it's like we're.
I did, I did do that, yeah. And so, I do have experience with managing some sizable projects, so I've, I've really kind of put myself in that position with Ray leaving, that he and I have been working very closely over the last couple of weeks, so.
Thank you.
I got one at home. I did. I can't remember how to use it, but I got one.
Robert, do you want to comment on anything? Are you okay?
I don't have anything to comment from, my apologies.
That's great. You don't have to. Counselor Snider?
My turn. Although I wasn't able to make it, I wanted to recognize that our recorder did an excellent job on trying to recruit people, put a lot of effort into that, I understand. I'm sorry you got such a small result from it, but I think she, we have a debt of gratitude to her for attempting this again. It's really a lot of work and thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you. I'm going to try it all the time.
I don't know if all of our council members got the email from the state of Oregon about the SEI, the ethics. Yeah, I tried to go in over the weekend and found out my password wasn't correct. But on the thing, if you've already registered previously, which I know you folk probably haven't, I could go in and just identify myself by my email address and they sent me the correct ID, not password, excuse me. They sent me the correct ID to get in, so they were able to do that. But that's coming up. What I don't know is whether new people have to do it this year or next.
I think we have to do it this year.
I did have the email stated by April fifteenth.
Yeah. You can also call them. The first time I did it, I called them on the phone and talked to them and they were very gracious about helping me through the little matrix, did like seven or eight questions or something.
That's a good point. You certainly started this year, I'm sure we got a report this year or not, but.
Then this year, so even if they start in January, it's still.
Yeah, make sure you do that, else you.
They get, they get very nasty if you don't do it. That's the downside.
We don't want to do that.
And the last thing I will be champion for Evan, who's not here, the Southern Oregon Planners Network meeting, two and three April. I stopped by to see him today and signed up for the first evening because I can't make it the next day, I have doctor's appointments. But I think Sarah and I were the only ones at this point that had actually logged in with him. I know you're going to have difficulty with that all day with your job, but maybe the evening will. Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anything?
Sarah and I both attended Cameron's Volunteer Fair. We did have one man come in and we almost sold him on volunteering. So, anybody out there on Facebook Live, maybe they want to come up for the next volunteer thing, it was great. I attended a chamber of commerce meeting, they are doing well, they're doing really well. There's so much headaches and problem solving that they're getting through and the previous bus chair is leaving and someone else is coming, but, but they have picked up many more businesses. Their, their website looks pretty good, their Facebook pages are looking, looking great. They're going to do good things, I think.
Great. It's challenging for a while.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I think so.
Counselor Weston?
So, I am planning to go at least to the April second part of the, what is it called? The Oregon Planners or Association of Planners?
It's the Southern Oregon Planners Network, I think, but it's.
A bunch of nerdy people who get together and talk about landings planning.
Yeah.
I'm going to be one of them on the second. I would like to attend the full day training on the third, but I'm not sure if I can get out of work, so. So, I'm looking forward to that. I've attended some of their trainings in the past and just landings is so complex and so cool and we'll be like diving into more of that, I think, when we continue talking about our UGV extension. So, I found kind of some of that content's really helpful. Also, I want to thank Kimberly for putting together the volunteer event. Hopefully we'll have more folks at the next one. And I did get to chat with somebody who, the gentleman who came, he said he's lived in Phoenix for twenty-two years. And my little station at the Cameron Center, all of the stations, and mine was for the planning commission. And I was trying to get him, you know, sold into, you know, we always need good people to volunteer with the city. And at that point, he brought up, he's like, ugh, you know, the politics in Phoenix are so bad and it's so, like, there's such a culture of disrespect that he just really was like, ugh, grossed out by the idea. So, I guess just as a reminder to us all of just like treating our volunteers with tremendous respect and, and making sure that we're making Phoenix a really good collaborative place. We don't always agree with one another, but we can treat each other with basic decency and respect. And I've, you know, heard in the last couple of meetings that people say they don't feel that way. So, I think we have some work to do there, but I think that we can do it together, but it just has to be something that we all, of course, have to do. So, that's it.
I think that's awesome.
Thank you. I don't mind, but the RV cog meeting is next week and then we get the, the planning meeting or the Rogue Valley, the, what's that, committee you're on, sorry? I'm having a brain.
Oh, the RMPO, RVMP, which I don't have an update on because the meeting doesn't happen.
Right. And I'm just, it's still really critical that we go in there and, and do a great job for us. Looking forward to you doing a nice job for us and trying to get us that little amendment on to the, the agreement. And what else? Last night, I had the opportunity to speak to one of our police officers. And he was very happy that we had done the proclamation. And he feels really good that we support the police department. And he's happy that we were doing that. And one other thing I'm gonna, I brought to Erin, we do have some loitering starting to happen outside of our building here and, at, at, at night. I'm not sure how we're gonna handle that, but I didn't mention it to Erin, that we do have people loitering at night from the Civic Center. So it doesn't get too chronic. And I'm not sure what to do yet on it, but to bring that up to him. And besides that, that's it. Anything else for the good of the order? All right. Order, thank you very much.
Thank you.